We have bar time on the wall. It's 6:00 now. I'll call the hearing to order. This is a public hearing for a minor subdivision application for Robert Garro, 929 Packer Road. Minor subdivision of approximately 71-acre lot into three lots, 51, 15, and 5, plus or minus. Mr. Garro was here. Hello?
Thank you.
And we have a revised plat. I'll just note that, we'll get into that in a minute. Just want to note that's here. Do we have any additional materials accompanying this? We have boundary line agreement.
I shared electronically.
Do we have a copy here?
Yep.
That's here, and that's been recorded?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else now? Okay. And I see we probably have a couple of interested parties here. I'll just go through our hearing procedure. First, I request any disclosures of conflict of interest or ex parte communications from members of the commission.
No.
None? Okay, perfect. Interested persons are defined by 24 VSA 4465B. Generally speaking, they're butters, neighbors, people who have an interest in this subdivision project. If you are not identified as an interested party here today, you may not have the ability to lodge any appeals based on the results of today. Are there any people who wish to be acknowledged as interested persons? Neighbors, I see a couple. Yeah?
Yes.
Would you like to identify yourself?
Doug and Ian Rose.
Rose, and you're neighbors?
Right.
Okay. Any objection to them being acknowledged as an interested party? Oh, okay, good, thank you. Anybody else? The Norton's, perhaps?
We're good at the time.
Well, just as a formality, just identify yourself as an interested party here, a budding neighbor?
Yes.
Okay, and we have Carol.
A budding neighbor.
Also a budding neighbor. I'll lump the two together. Any opposition to acknowledging both as interested parties? We both know where they reside. Is anybody else here today who'd like to be identified as an interested party? I think that's about it. David doesn't apply. He's an interesting party. Or maybe just a party.
He's just a party.
All day long. Alright, so... Alright, that's done. What's next? I think that's the formalities. Good, so...
Swearing in?
Yeah, we have to do swearing in. Where is that? That's in Page 5. Right, do we have Mr. Garro, Mr. Robert Garro? Do you have your representative here today, or are you representing yourself?
I wasn't even notified. I came down this afternoon and got information about the access to this. I forwarded it to my attorney, but he hasn't, he was given like two hours' notice.
Okay, yeah, fair enough. I'm gonna ask you to take this oath. If you could just repeat after me. "I hereby swear that the evidence I give..."
"I hereby swear the evidence I give..."
"...in the clause under consideration..."
"In the clause under consideration."
"...shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth..."
"Shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth."
"...under the pains and penalties of perjury."
"Under the pains and penalties of perjury."
Alright, thank you. We've accepted your written submissions, which are the plat, your boundary line adjustment. Do you have anything else to present?
I do not.
Okay. Would you like to say anything in support of your application, right off the top? Okay. Do we have any questions about the application? We've seen it a couple times in sketch plan review and other ways. Any questions? Anybody want to review the changes that were made since the last time you signed?
I just did.
Okay.
We had the wetlands, which you did, archaeological sites, that we asked for. There, the woodlands, wetlands continued.
I think the main thing was the writing was in the way, and I think it's been moved. We can see it now, it looks like.
The existing drive with one pole room showed, the bull tire right here.
Yeah, and this one too. Where is that? I can't really search for it. I think it said farm drive.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
The possible...
And the note here about the boundary line adjustment is referencing the new agreement, right?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
I just have a question of clarification regarding the agreement. I'm noticing that the property line agreement refers to the two parcels in question. And as to parcel four, the description says, gives the parcel ID number, the volume and page number, and then following the page number, I'm reading from the property line agreement, it says sick, page 606, while the plat says it's page 506. So I'm just, that wording, sick, is usually indicated, used to indicate an error. And I'm just curious, is 506 wrong as depicted on the plat? And/or is...
Which number is that?
It's here.
Now Bob, was that what you came down for and asked a wrong typo from the deed?
The boundary agreement has the proper page numbers.
So the proper, the correct page number is 606?
In the boundary agreement. My attorney asked me that question because, yeah, he said he had conflicting references to it.
And we looked it up.
Okay, so, just to make sure I understand what's being said. So the page number that's depicted on the plat is incorrect?
If it says something other than 606, then yes.
It says 506. Yeah. Do we have mylar's? Yep?
They're waiting for an approval. They're waiting for a signature to be able to create the mylar's on the floor.
Okay, that's one way to do it. In that case, they could probably fix the page number. Yeah, just then the...
Then you get a simple fix for them, and then they could create the mylar.
Yeah. Then this becomes a little funky because that's reciting the plat, which... See what I'm saying? I'm not trying to make a big deal out of it. I really just wanted to understand what was being... 606 seems to be the right one. 606 seems to be the right number. It's probably best to correct it on the mylar.
There's nobody on Zoom.
Bob?
Hey, Bob?
Peter.
Peter, sorry.
Nobody's...
Nobody on Zoom, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? No. About anything?
I mean, I'm sure when I call the engineers and I point that reference out, it'll be an easy fix for them.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. I just, I just think it probably should be fixed. And I know last time we had a conversation at some length about the access to parcel four, and I'm just wondering, is that depicted anywhere on the plat?
The state didn't require it with the Act 250 amendment application. That was a town requirement. So I came down and I got the town permit. Nick Clayton, you know, signed off on and gave it to me.
That's right. I recall that you did get a permit from the town. And the permit from the town...
Is recorded.
Okay. Do you... We have that, right?
They have?
Yep.
Okay. And we'll, do we have it here in your notes? Let's just throw it into the, we'll add it to the record. Alright, good. Thank you. If I just take a moment to look at it? This one is indicated, but this one isn't, at least not explicitly.
Yeah, because I thought when we last we discussed it, there was something about if they wanted to put that on there as the access, you'd have to go through Act 250 again, wasn't it? Or to have access, you needed to go through Act 250 again if they decided to put it away.
Anything that's in any of these parcels for construction has to go through Act 250.
Right, the state was very clear that they weren't making, or granting any approval with respect to development of the site. And so when and if the time comes for you or a later owner wants to put it in a driveway, the state will have something to say about where that goes.
What I think we discussed at our last meeting was this, my view, and we build a site today. My view is that this access is sufficient for the access requirements in our regulations.
What would you say, this access?
The farm drive. The noted, indicated access.
Goes right up to...
We require access to all parcels. It's my view that this existing farm road indicated here is a dashed line is enough to satisfy our requirements, given that future access will have to go through, before it goes in the ground, we'll have to go through Act 250 anyway. And that's my proposal to you.
There's a, yeah, that was why we discussed last time.
Oh, I see where, I see.
But there is a count approved access also.
Right. Which satisfies ours again.
Right. I think it's not within our jurisdiction, but my understanding is that the state wetlands division will probably require that the access be in a location that has the least amount of impact on the wetlands. And that may be the existing farm drive since it's an existing...
Existing access.
Existing access.
The only problem with that is that it's not as suitable, it's not wide enough. It's not, it's not built in that capacity. And it goes through a more sensitive area of wetlands than the one that was approved by the town.
This isn't our issue?
I understand. I'm just giving you my perspective from being there for 60-some years.
Yeah. No, I understand, and I appreciate that. All I'm saying is that the state may have different ideas than any of us in this room. And that'll be resolved at some point in the future, and not within our control.
In the area here, you don't have in front of you, welcome to come up if you don't know what I'm talking about, but it says pond, and that's the fire pond, the one that was formerly a fire pond that has an old pond.
It had been previously, yeah.
Now, I know we're, we should be explicit about it. We're not discussing any potential development on these sites at the moment.
Just breaking it up.
Yep. But I will throw out there, it's, it's my thought that should these be developed, and we would fully expect them to at some point, that's sort of the reason.
Beyond my reach.
Right. Re-tenant would probably not buy them for hay necessarily. If, I think it would be my hope that when this goes before Act 250 for that next redevelopment, permit revision, that...
Anything, anyone, anyone who buys this, any parcel of this, is now subject to going through Act 250 again.
Right. It would be my hope that Act 250 would ask for that fire pond to be renovated in support of the existing farm, in support of potentially three more homes. So, would you have any problem? You probably won't own the property.
Yeah, I'm not gonna own it at that point in time, so it doesn't matter to me.
Alright.
That can be a request made upon Mr. Rose. If he's, would be so gracious as to take it on.
No, I don't need it.
Wait.
Okay. Any other questions? From the commission?
I'm simply trying to create my retirement.
Have nobody else? Okay.
Have we solicited any comments from the...
About to. So the interested parties that we've identified, this is almost everybody. Do you have any questions about the application, comments, support, or against?
Sounds like you guys have done your homework, I guess.
Do you care, neutral, supportive, against it? If you find either any of the above are fine, you're welcome to say whatever you like or nothing at all. No comments? No comments, okay, fair enough. We can open up to everybody else. You have any thoughts, David? No? Okay. I think that's it. Everybody else is... I'm sorry, Carol, I didn't actually address you, but would you like to say anything?
I'm fine, as long as it doesn't affect my spring, I'm fine.
Okay, I think, I think we've set that one.
I think we have.
It's all set. Peter? Anything?
Nope.
Alright. If there's nothing else, then we will adjourn the hearing and move into a deliberative session, and we will meet at a future date to discuss it and come up with our decision. Anything else from the commission today? Anything else from anybody? Alright, the hearing is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Any changes to the agenda? Anybody have anything else to add? No, hearing done. The agenda's approved. We have one or two?
One.
One set of minutes, right here, for May 20th. You had some thoughts.
Yeah, I, I thought the minutes were fine. There was one part that I thought was a little unclear, and which in my memory, it didn't seem accurate, but my memory is not what it used to be. It's the portion of the minutes that, in which the boundary line adjustment was discussed.
It's right here.
It is in, almost halfway down the Garro discussion. It says in discussion to issue the boundary line between Mr. Rose's property and that of Gary and Lori Norton. My suggestion would be, I think the level of detail probably isn't necessary, and if we took the detail out, then my issues would go away. I think you could just, I can scratch it out. Yeah, so, I was... I would, the sentence that begins, "Both parties agreed", I would delete that and the next sentence and substitute a sentence, which I can send to you, so you don't have to write it down. But I would suggest substituting a sentence that says, "The plat recites that the parties are entering into a boundary line adjustment." Period. "The status of the adjustment was discussed and appeared that had not yet been agreed upon." Period. And then continue with, "Chair proposed that this should be done to avoid any future issues." I don't know if that sounds okay to the rest.
Agreed upon or finalized or recorded?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any of those.
Yeah.
Finalized is a better choice.
Anything else?
That was my only comment, and if everyone's okay with that, I'll just forward the suggestion to you.
Do they have anything else for the minutes? Okay. I'll bring this back, let me see.
Yeah.
I just wanted to check real quick about the site visits to begin all of that information. Well, I think I'd like to acknowledge some of the other findings from our site visit here, under loose purse. I believe I reported on a couple other things, and you may have also, the mold.
I mean, I don't know how much detail we need to put. I mean, it was in violate, it was the, there's a health officer violation which lists all these problems. It is recorded in the town record.
Yeah, but I think it's, I think it's noteworthy that they admitted it to us when we were there.
Noteworthy in what sense? I mean, basically, we'll talk about this in my report, but, I mean, their argument is that they have made it habitable as a single-family residence.
Well, but the, that's here nor there. I mean, the fact is that they completely rebuilt it. There's no way you could possibly say that they don't have to file a permit for it.
Well, I'm not saying that, I didn't say that.
Right, I don't think...
What they said during the site visit is that they had gutted one of the buildings, and that they had dealt with various sanitary issues.
Wouldn't that have to be mitigated by the state health officer?
It doesn't say here anything like that. They did anything with the sanitary issues, right?
Well, they restored power and water and made the wastewater system functional. I mean, I could reiterate what they specifically said, which was that the toilets were all completely full of shit. I mean, we can say that.
This is the whole basement once.
But, but there are also other issues that the...
I mean, this is the, this is the record of our site visit. This is the only record of our...
This is our site visit?
No? This is the record of our site visit. There is no other record. The minutes of the commission are the record. So if you think this is all we want to say about that site visit, I don't know, I would say more. I would have it be a more complete record of what happened that day. Like my report, so...
Is there, did you...
It was fairly noteworthy, I thought.
You wrote a written report of the...
No, I recited my recollection of the visit.
Okay.
I mean, if that's the only record of it, probably out of, in my past experience with anything that needs to be recorded, if there's only one record of it, make sure it's a good one.
I'd say we, we've had lots of experiences with these things coming back and like, well, I wish we had recorded that better, or...
Kind of for like stuff I do for work and stuff more, better to some degree.
Yeah, are there reasons why you would prefer not to?
Well, the thing is, I'm not sure that we want to sort of box ourselves into a corner regarding what we think about the process from here on in. They reported to us that they had, quote, "gutted" the inside. We didn't look at the inside, so we have no idea what that means. They reported that they had restored the power, that they'd restored the water, and that they had ensured that the septic system was working. They reported about the appalling conditions that were there when they bought the property, which are recorded in the health officer's report and the fire marshal's report. The fire marshal, they also confirmed, which we could say, the fire marshal did come and see them and noted, and noted that he had previously condemned the property, but took no further action.
Well, but, I think they acknowledged that the property was condemned.
That was not my recollection. I had...
There's no, condemnation is not like a previous kind of situation. It is either that or nothing.
I had already sent them in a letter, the note, a copy of both fire marshal's condemnations of the building.
But not with certified letter, right?
No.
Right, so there, I guess what I'm trying to say is the same thing that I said already, is that this is the report, this is the record of that. Their admission that they know about those things in legal terms is very significant, where our view that they should know them is not. You see the difference?
I do see the difference, but also, as far as I'm aware, the fact that it is now a private home rather than a rented property means that the same rules do not apply. The fire marshal, when they came and did the condemnation, it was being rented, therefore it was a public building. And it is no longer a public building, which confuses the issue for us.
I think I have a question.
Yeah.
I think we're getting ahead of ourselves if we're trying to record or document whether or not the fact that it's a private residence changes the issue. That's like a legal conclusion that we don't have to make. My question is, during the course of your site visit, was there anything said either by you or by them on the subject of the fire marshal's condemnation? Whether it was an acknowledgement or not is not my objective. Was it discussed or mentioned in any way?
It was raised as a statement of fact.
By who?
I think initially by John.
Okay.
And the owners then confirmed that the fire marshal himself had stopped by and said, "I previously condemned this structure, and no further action has been taken by the fire marshal." I mean, I think partly, the issue at hand, which I think John is not referring to, is whether or not substantial improvements have taken place, because our, the flood hazard area issues are not related to the sanitary condition of the property. They're related to...
To its location in the flood zone.
And improvements made to it.
Well, it's not, again, we're getting into conclusions that's not actually true, because you could have a total loss to a building where it is a wastewater issue. So, I would like that at least the fire marshal issue, the condemnation issue, the acknowledgement of the sanitary issues to be reflected in the minutes.
I also, if I understand the discussion thus far correctly, you didn't actually have an opportunity to determine whether the building had been gutted or not or renovated? Just, they just said that they had done this. Is that right?
They did invite us in, but we did not take them up on that.
Alright, it absolutely declined.
Yeah. I guess, I wouldn't use the word confirmed in that sentence only because, to me, it almost sounds like we stated that it had been gutted and they confirmed it. I would just say the owners represented that they had gutted. Whether they invited us in or not isn't, to my mind, important.
Right.
What about any redevelopment or any further development or corners of flood hazard?
We asked them to put in an application.
Yeah, I was, okay, that's what I was figuring you would ask. But like, so we're trying to look back at what they've done, or you're trying to look at what they might do?
Well...
Because redevelopment sounds like it's already done, kind of. Whereas if we said like, if anything more happens...
I mean, you could just say improvement, redevelopment, and more improvement.
And also may have issued a letter, certified letters dating that.
Well, they have, I mean, I do have a report to give you, my report.
Okay.
There has been further action.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, keeping an accurate record here of the things, because, you know, I, I don't know where things stand now, but as of the last time, last meeting. Let me think what else was said. So is it our view that the fact that they renovated the space without getting a permit is a violation of our regulation ordinance? So the part that would trigger is the, I think we called it substantial improvement.
I thought there was like a dollar value or a percent value of the.
I mean, there's, there was essentially a zero dollar value in the structures. So any improvement.
I, I don't know what the.
This is like the easiest possible case.
Even if, even if the standard was substantial, it sounds like they're there.
Right. And I think that's something that we would want reflected here as well, that we reviewed the idea, the concept of substantial improvement with them. At least we raised the issue. I remember mentioning that to them. Maybe that's better than redevelopment, the substantial improvement.
Well, I guess my question would be at this point is, you, you were saying there was unsanitary conditions. And now in what part of that building worthy?
I don't have any knowledge of conditions. I refuse to. I do not want to be.
Because the only, the only reason I asked that. I remember that building having a, having a shower.
I don't know anything about what happened in there. What they said was that, I can't remember whether they pointed to building on the.
But if it was the main building, the night we had, we filed the fire.
They weren't talking about that one at all.
Because I was going to say, if it was the main building, the night we fought the fire there, they had been pumping the shit out of the basement into the river.
Yeah, cool.
But not that. They were just the people that were living there. And it was dumping into the basement, then they pump it out.
As far as I can tell, there.
So this is exempt activities would be interior improvements or repairs to existing buildings that cost less than five hundred dollars. So I think they probably would need that.
And there's also an issue about resolving violations.
That's not what it means.
No, I'm saying that it's right in their bylaw.
Yeah, but that's what that means.
It's example.
It's like a shed.
No, all, no, it says interior improvements.
If it's a dollar value, the improvements is less than five hundred.
That's an exempt activity, so I'm saying over five hundred.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought you were saying that they, they qualified for the exemption. I don't think so.
There is also an exemption regarding rectifying violations.
And I believe we increased the dollar value on that here a while back too.
Oh, well. That's what's in the bylaw. As far as the sanitary issues, as far as I know, Faith and I had no direct knowledge of that at the time. They said something about like, I can't remember how they phrased it exactly. But like, the, the bottom was full of whatever. Coop.
It's a lot of excrement.
Yeah.
Shit.
And I can't remember which, if it wasn't the, the main hotel.
I know the main building, that did add.
All right. So I think, I think that covers that.
Are we going to table these to the next meeting then?
Table the minutes. You want to listen to her report first before we approve?
No, well, that doesn't impact what happened at the last meeting.
Well, she gives her report, um, for the follow-up, it might end up in this minutes.
No, but these, I mean.
These are minutes from last month. It's important to get to this before new information.
Are we going to table the approval of these minutes until they're revised?
Yeah, we could do that. Let's do that. All right, we'll come back to it. All right. So you have a floor, Faith?
Right, okay. BCRs, Watson, Okeemobee Lane, a twenty-four by forty-four garage. Nielsen and Doherty, Old Tiffany Road, a thirty by thirty-five garage and a forty-two by twenty-four yoga room sauna office. That one I double checked because.
Where was it?
Old Tiffany Road.
Oh, okay.
The yoga room sauna office does include a bathroom, of course. I believe they have consulted with the state and it's included within their existing wastewater permit. A Honan on Shumpike Road, removal and replacement of a mobile home. Ganza on Gates Road, thirty by forty-two foot garage.
Sorry, do they say removal?
Removal and replacement.
Oh, and replacement. Okay. I didn't catch the replacement. And sorry, what's the, uh, what road is that on?
Uh, Shumpike. And one which Andy drew to my attention was Ludwig on Sawyer Hill Road appears to have started construction on something for which I don't believe we received a BCR. I did today receive a wastepart permit.
Solar? Solar?
No, he's building a structure of some sort. There's a concrete pad on.
He had.
Looks like there's going to be a garage or.
He asked about solar.
He asked about solar, but.
Like, like big, like industrial.
Development has received wastewater permit, so I assume it's not solar.
It looks like it's got two bays for a garage.
I will follow up and ask.
He lives out of state, so he probably is unaware of the BCR requirement.
Well, no, because I did write to him about it in relation to the solar.
Oh.
I mentioned it in pressing.
All right.
If you're doing any construction, you have to.
All right, then he knows.
Okay. So, uh, next on my list, actually, let me start with one that's easier. Patch, the flood hazard area permit has now been issued and tomorrow will pass the appeal period, so it will be fully in effect. He has, following the whole process, added a small complication because he know what's to put in a garage. So he's putting a a concrete pad for the garage, but that will be at the same elevation as the house. Kyle Medash has advised that he should then get the garage and the house included in the letter of map adjustment, since the base flood elevation will be the same for both. Both would be taken out of the flood hazard area.
Is it possible to summarize the, so the conditional use permit was approved? At the hearing, is that what?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a, a very short synopsis of that? What, I attended the hearing, so I was just curious.
There should be.
No, there's the other, oh.
There are several minutes, which I have been extremely busy on my day job in recent weeks, so I'm slightly behind on the board of adjustment support, but we have a findings and decision document.
Yes.
Which was signed.
And posted.
And posted.
Okay.
The basis of which was the
But in, in synopsis, it sounds like there is a map adjustment that enabled it.
There will be. He has a conditional letter of map adjustment from FEMA.
Done through, through a private engineering firm?
A survey by.
Surveyor.
Private engineer, I suppose. Once construction is complete, the surveyor then has to confirm that the elevations are as proposed and then complete the form and FEMA will issue a formal letter with map adjustment, which will take the house.
And do we have, do we have in the bylaw, did we have a I forget what they call it. It's not really quite a what do they call those things where you?
Like a CLO or something like that.
A certificate of.
It's not quite the same because it's.
It talks about.
It's like an aspilts or like.
A certificate of elevation.
They call it, so they call it, okay. But that's not part of our bylaw, that's part of the FEMA approval.
No, it is also in the bylaw. The letter of map adjustment is not in the bylaw.
Okay, all right.
So he's actually following a process which is not directly referenced in our bylaw.
So the, the permit approval is sort of contingent on the delivery of that.
Of those structures.
One of the conditions of the approval is that, that be confirmed.
Yes.
administrative responsibilities, all certificates of occupancy and receipts as required.
All right, sorry, go ahead. Thanks.
Patch. Armstrong, also flood hazard area, I sent a certified letter which the post office tried three times to deliver and then it was returned to me unknown. Nobody could sign for it and there was no forwarding address, so. And this is the address that we have in the ground list for the owner. I do not know what.
Armstrong, that's where.
Dean Armstrong, uh, sorry, this is the camper van which has been placed.
Oh, okay. Down, down by the.
Down by the town road.
Are they paying taxes through a like trust or insurance company or something like that? No, I don't know. They don't seem to be at the address.
He pays his taxes through the delinquent tax collector.
Oh, yeah.
And as, as far as I'm aware, nobody has physically been to the property since they placed that camper there.
The fourth of July after they placed it, was it, were they in that, was it?
Yeah. I mean, you guys would know.
Oh, they had a party.
They were doing all that burning.
Yeah, the fourth of July after they placed it there, but I have never seen anybody ever say.
What do we, what do you think of?
I mean, according to the tax maps, it's on my property, but you know. But that's another issue, but I don't know. I mean, the last time there was flooding, I went and I moved as much stuff up, all the detritus up as far as I could in case it.
No, I, I mean, I don't think what to do.
I don't know what to do.
Yeah, with your good efforts there, but I just mean like, is there any other way to contact them?
Unless someone else knows where this person mail is.
Well, Faith, has you been in contact with the delinquent tax collector or they're just filing off?
It's eventually before the delinquent tax collector and now with the new law, we can't have a tax sale at this time. Usually he would be paying in May and June.
So the delinquent tax collector has been in contact with them?
He sends him letters.
Maybe he's got a better address than we do?
Or just more persistent?
But he must send him letters to the address in the ground list.
Probably.
Okay, interesting.
You know, he might have been just to accept. You know, to sign for the certified letter.
No, they mark them, I imagine.
I can, I have it in the office there. It says, um.
It's a P O box somewhere.
I was going to say, because I thought they usually had a thing they could check, like if somebody refused to sign.
Yeah, I think they do. But if they don't have a.
In other words, they, they sent him a note saying you got to come in and pick up the letter and he might not come in.
Yeah, I understand that.
Return to sender unclaimed unable to forward. There was no forwarding.
Can I see it?
He never came to pick it up.
Well, no.
It's a good address? Well, it appears to be.
Is it a P O box, you think?
No, Two White Street, apartment two. But.
If he wasn't home and they left him a letter.
If there's a mailbox that they put the mail in, he could have looked at it, seen where it is and just left it there.
No, he had to say that.
Only if, only if.
They, they can't just leave.
Oh, I've seen them leave it.
Well, they weren't supposed to. That's the whole point of.
They're not supposed to.
Did you send one certified?
I sent one uncertified a couple of weeks before I sent that one. And got no response.
Well, it didn't come back either.
Uh, no, because if it's just general mail, it won't come back.
Well, if they can't deliver it, well, they left it there and you obviously got it, or somebody got it.
Yeah, interesting. Unclaimed.
Try and send it again.
Sorry?
Just said try and send it again.
Yeah. I mean, it hasn't been opened, there's still postage on it. Can you send it back?
No. No, you'd have, you'd have to.
Do we do it?
Put his address in there.
Actually, the same here. The article's addressed to Two White Street, apartment two. And then the mail carrier wrote Two White Street, apartment five, with the five in quotation marks.
What?
So I don't know what that means. Dyslexia?
Upside down, do you?
They're backwards.
Okay, my writing's not that great, but.
Well, it, it's clearly apartment two on the other side. So I don't know what. All right.
Okay, I can try again.
Let's try again.
But it's addressed to the right address. And see what happens. Uh, okay. Belmont General Store. So the other day, I was asked by the town clerk about what was happening at the Belmont General Store. Because someone who wanted to remain anonymous had expressed concern about the construction impeding the snowplows in the winter. I said that there wasn't much I could do, but I could ask for a new building construction registration because they've exceeded the year of the previous one.
Well, that, that corner there on the post office, that construction registration did go through here. What, a year ago, two years ago?
So they have to reapply.
But they only lasted a year. So I asked Alyssa to resubmit, which she did, and I asked her to give some indication of the overall site plan. All I received on that was this, and this is not an official BCR yet because she hasn't come in and paid.
This is similar to what we, what Dave brought in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So my interpretation, which is.
You still have the columns.
Design issues aside, I think they are assuming that the proposals as made in the Belmont Village Plan will become fact.
Such as?
Such as a potential little sort of cutout which extends, a curb which extends into the road forms an ADA parking space. And it's the extension to the road, which apparently the town owns everything from the immediate.
From the edge of the porch.
From the edge of the porch. So there's, there are two issues. One is.
It's a select board has to.
Yeah, who, who can deal with this?
So what, if I understand, you're saying that they're going to create a bump in the sidewalk there, that that bump will go into.
Well.
I mean, even putting, even putting in a sidewalk requires town approval. I mean, it's.
This is the boundary, no.
Have they updated taxes like part of it?
They haven't. But actually Alyssa has asked to be on the next select, select board at general.
Okay, well, we're going to try to have a little conversation. So did you have a question?
Ask you.
Well, I'm just saying where, where they. Well, I'm just saying where, where they say the post office is, isn't.
This is a proposal.
Different. Tackle fish.
At the time that Dave Tilley presented some drawings to us, which he didn't leave with us. His proposal was that because the current post office entrance is not ADA accessible. If they moved the entrance, they could make it ADA accessible, which is the rationale for moving the entrance. They have already closed off. What is now proposed as the front entrance, used to be the entrance for the trucks, the post office trucks. They've already moved that around the corner.
Well, they got permission from the post office to do that, from what I was.
Possibly, I don't know.
Yeah, cause that's a government deal.
Yeah, you don't screw with the post office.
So.
He does.
The location of a new entrance would have to be negotiated presumably with the post office architect, but. That was the rationale that was given to us two years ago. That they were making it more accessible, which was also, which is also linked to the idea of. Making a, a single or possibly two ADA parking spaces right here.
So.
Right, but at that time, they were also, I believe, the third floor was gonna be a deck and not an enclosed facility, if I remember.
Yeah, well, guess what, buddy?
Hey, what do I know?
So where do things lie with Act Two Fifty? And the reason I ask is because one of the big issues and reason why. For lack of a better term, zoning review is important, is like where the F of the parking spot's gonna go, so like. Dave doesn't control the street, town controls the street, they're putting in twenty seats of restaurant. And where are the cars gonna go? So that's why Act Two Fifty needs to be involved in this, because they're gonna ask that question, they're gonna say, okay, where are the cars gonna go? Are they gonna be?
I do.
Is there gonna be a stop sign, is there gonna be a handicap, there's, you know, we can't really get into all of that because we don't have the authority. We have no zoning, so the state is the only one who can do that here. The select board can try, but they, I'm not sure they can do it either. The last I heard from.
Quinn.
Quinn, was she was gonna talk to them. It was pretty clear that they were above the threshold now, but.
It seems, quote from her, it seems like the contiguous lands owned by the Tilley family may be over the one acre threshold. If this is the case, the proposed construction of improvement on the tract. Is what would potentially bring store and all the associated land under jurisdiction.
Yeah, well, they, they bought the Bollack property, so. I think we need to look back in on your Quinn.
Yeah, Quinn said, as a next step, I can reach out to Alyssa and Dave to provide this guidance.
Right, and that was around February, March, I believe, so are you able to connect with her this week and see where we are?
Uh, yeah, I can do that.
Well, just putting in their water and subjects will be interesting.
Well, the biggest thing is, is if it is, they gotta work with the town on that, I mean. The select board does have a little bit of say whether they're gonna let them have parking out there or not.
Well, as far, yeah, the select board controls the roads.
Yeah, basically, the only park in their guts across the road.
Well, they, they seem to have sort of, they think they own in front of the store, but they don't.
Well, and what they think and what they do may be two different things.
I don't even think they think they own. And they may not think it, but they.
They act like they.
There you go.
And I remember them talking about there being, I'm gonna call it a pad, for lack of a better word. Where roughly where they're doing the construction now, where they were saying, well, you could put a stop sign.
There is, that, that was where they would have the mail truck backing down in and they.
Right, yes.
Well, I didn't, they haven't done that yet.
Right, but I'm just, yeah, but that drawing is completely different than what they presented.
So let's just, I think we can.
The post office is actually now under the upper level as well.
Post office.
So now the mess, Tipster or whatever this is, I think the old, the best. You know, thing we could do is, is see where we are with Act Two Fifty, because the. Traffic, parking, plowing, snow removal, safety, pedestrian access, all that stuff is what they do, it's not what we do.
As I say, Alyssa's asked us to speak at the next select board meeting.
She's asked us to speak?
No, no, Alyssa.
She was speaking.
And that may also be a.
So that's, uh, July.
Yeah, July eighth.
Yeah, it could be interesting.
Okay, uh, Blue Spruce, so following the site visit, uh, the owners. Bakers came in to see me, um, they have looked at the flood hazard area by law because I had sent them a copy of it. Some time ago, um, they are of the opinion. That the improvements that they've made are rectifying a violation, which is one of the exemptions, and of minimal cost.
So. Violation of what?
A violation.
No, no, but what do they assert, they're correcting?
The. Fire marshal's, uh, condemnation of the building.
That's, yeah, but that's not a violation of anything, we have to do it.
Yeah, but anyway.
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand what their position is, their position is they're correcting the violation of the. Entire condemnation of the building.
That is, yeah.
Okay, so interesting loophole.
So I looped them in because I think it's best that they are involved in this, in a conversation with Kyle Medash. Who has, because they were, they were, the bakers, the owners are arguing that they have not made substantial improvements. In their view, they've just redecorated inside.
You mean their view now?
The phrase that they, they didn't say redecorated inside, but they did say that they had merely done. Cosmetic improvements to make it habitable.
But during your, your visit here in the office, that's their new, their new framing, their new characterization of what they does.
Yes.
Specifically, that's why I wanted to address this before we got to this, because they use the word gutted.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, um, so, but the issue at hand, I think, is this determination of substantial improvements. For which we need to know the cost of the building, which I don't know, but I can find out from Carol, but I don't know if, if that would be considered the same as the value of the building. Uh, we'd also need to know, um, how much they have spent. So those are issues that I need to clarify with them, however, the. Other issue is, basically, we need to have a survey with the base flood elevation. To be able to clarify what, if anything, is possible in terms of. Any further improvements on the building. Which they would have to, they would have to undertake that survey. So I have not yet got back to them on that, um. But i- in the, if, if they simply say, all we're going to do is continue just to make it habitable, we have made it habitable and we only spent five hundred dollars.
So, okay, we're gonna finish, finish, aren't we?
Uh, we, we could argue, um, that. We disagree with them about how much money they've spent, or we, but, but, you know. I'm not really clear what action we can take apart from asking them to provide this information on the costs. Which, which also, by the way, need to be averaged out over three years before you can make a full determination of substantial improvement.
Sounds like.
What, remind me what the bylaw says, does it say, does it define, does it use substantial improvement?
No, for, okay, for exemptions?
Yeah. No, no, that's, that's for exemptions, what is the definition of substantial improvement? So we have a section on when they.
There's, there's nothing about substantial improvement in there for exemptions, but.
No.
No, there is in the definitions section.
Cause remember when we were writing this, we went back and forth and we talked about like, how are we gonna, so.
It means any repair, reconstruction, rehabilitation, addition or other improvement to a structure after the date of adoption of this bylaw.
Definitely this.
The cost of which, over three years or over the period of a common plan of development. Cumulatively equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure before the start of construction of the improvement.
So the market value of the structure before the start of the improvement was zero. So let me just. Close to, well, it was condemned, it was fire uninhabitable, so like, let me just, let me just, let me phrase it this way, so all of those things that you said that we may, may need. Way I would phrase it is those are the things that they need. So when a building is condemned, it is a, I would call it a rebubble presumption that that building is destroyed. And any improvements are substantial. It is up to them to prove that they are not in violation. It is not our job to prove, we are not investigators, we do not have to invest, you are not, um, you do not, you could, I would suggest you don't. It is their job to say that, to prove that they are not. Subject to those provisions of the bylaw. On its face, when you're condemned and you rehab, gut and rehab the building, you are making substantial improvements. There's no possible logical, rational argument that would be different. I agree, and I also think the fact that they paid whatever they paid for the property doesn't necessarily mean that the structure had any value, because they're buying the land as well. So, and the bylaw says the value of the structure. So the fact that they paid whatever they paid doesn't mean that the structure has any value.
The structure has value.
I'm not sure it does if it's condemned.
One next to me is pretty much as bad, isn't it?
I mean, the fact that it was condemned, the. When it's condemned, we get, I mean, it's like the easiest possible scenario, you don't even have to quibble.
Except what they're arguing is that whatever, I'm gonna just say in general, whatever they're saying is the cause of the condemnation. They have remediated.
It doesn't matter whatsoever.
Doesn't matter.
No, I'm saying that's what they're saying.
Yeah, but that's like, no, it's not, it's not even what they're saying.
I just have a problem, why does it matter?
Why does what matter?
This whole issue.
Because we have a law.
What?
I mean, I'm not gonna get into discussion about whether laws are good or whatever, we do, and we expect, we're, we're expected to administer it.
What bylaw is it?
The flood hazard and river corridor bylaw.
Well, could you just have mentioned that, I've just heard bylaw.
Oh, yeah, well, Faith mentioned it. So. I, I don't think there's a lot to do here, I mean, they have.
Yeah, the easiest thing for them to do would probably be do like Patches did and talk to Ethan. Or not Ethan, yeah. No, not.
Kyle?
Kyle, there we go, God, I get them all mixed up, Kyle about getting, uh, adjustment.
Yeah, I mean, Kyle copied that one, where he proposed that. I mean, he recommends that they have the survey done anyway, to establish the base flood elevation.
But if they wanna like come up with, I think it's ridiculous, but if they wanna try to make an argument that they've only put in five hundred dollars worth of materials. They can make that argument. I think it would be completely disingenuous. I mean, five hundred dollars in materials, like how many, what's that these days?
Well, I hate to say it, but I framed my whole house on less than five hundred dollars.
Yeah, but that's rare.
So.
You sold newspaper, right?
No. I grabbed the sawmill. Took whatever I wanted.
So the.
So I will go back to the owners and say again, because they asked what, what I wanted them, what we wanted them to do, and I said, I'd like you to submit. An application for a flood hazard area river corridor permit. They were saying that they felt that they were. In the exemptions category, which is why I brought in the state to back up the argument that they need to, to apply for this permit. Which then draws them into having to prove that what they're doing is. Within the boundaries of the law.
And what is the, what is the claim basis for their exemption?
I notice that they have nothing, because exemptions doesn't even have what they mentioned.
There is a.
So what, what I heard you say is that you, you said they represented that they were curing a violation.
Yes. As in the fire marshal's condemnation.
But it's a very, it's an interesting theory.
In other words, they got legal.
They, they looked at our law and said, well, you know, we're exempt because. We didn't spend much money and we are.
I don't see anything.
It is, there is a, an exemption if you are curing a violation.
I don't believe it either, I, I have to go study it, but I, I don't believe it means like any violation of any kind. I see what they're saying, they're, they're saying that whatever they spent was spent just to cure a violation. A violation of being uninhabitable. Yeah. It's a very, that's probably not what we meant by the word violation. The fact that it was, so I haven't looked at it in a while, so I'll go back and look, so, um. Have they in fact done that, where does the fire marshal stand today?
Uh, I have not yet had a chance to speak to the fire marshal, but I will do so. I will also clarify, because the, the fire marshal's report is based on it being a public building.
Okay, so that issue, that makes no sense whatsoever, so we don't really have a formal process of, of changing use in this town, because we don't have zoning. But I, I don't believe, and we'd have to check this, that, that just because you stopped renting it, you no longer are a public building according to the Department of Public Safety. I don't think that that's a quick way out of that, what, I think it's sort of like, you're a public building and you're still a public building.
Well, no, because what the fire marshal is demanding in this report, in the fire marshal's report when it was rented out. Is that repairs are undertaken, which conform to the rules which are applicable to public buildings.
But, but that line of reasoning entirely undercuts their claim that they're curing a violation. Because if they're no longer a public building, they no longer have a violation in need of curing. The fact is they were no longer a building. So the whole, so let's go back to like the, the principle of the thing, right, so why is this rule in the bylaw? It's so that when a building is destroyed, you don't build it back in a dumb freaking place, right? So you build, you're gonna build a new building, you either mitigate it properly, you raise it up, you do the things that you guys talked about in your conditional use permit. Or you move it, you build it somewhere else, right, so they've basically rebuilt in like the worst possible place.
Substantially improved.
Substantially improved, rebuilt, or however we wanna, you know.
Yes, which I warned them not to do two months ago, but, so I will now go back to, I say, you need to fill in this application. And from there, the next step would be that they will have to, irrespective. And from there, the next step would be that they will have to, irrespective of the substantial improvement, if they want anything to do to go ahead from now, the next step is to get a survey done to establish the base flood elevation.
I'm gonna say that they, they should be able to get a survey done for base flood elevation there fairly handily. It doesn't flood there. It floods down further, but it doesn't.
Bob Tinker will be able to do it for them. Since he never knows how to do it, since he did it for me.
Yeah, because see, you've got that dam head right there, which pretty well protects that building.
Saying it doesn't flood, like it, it gets deep there, but it hasn't come up and taken the buildings away or even come up across there. So it should be easy enough for them to get that done and then they would gain compliance. Or if they have somebody else, they say, no, we're not doing it, then that's, we can't redraw those lines. It's the state.
I think it is state infant on this one.
Yeah, with FEMA.
Yeah. Because this one is river corridor and.
It's not true, a corridor.
Oh, flood hazard area, so.
Hazard area.
Okay. But if I understood you correctly, the map's gonna be redrawn or redone in some way that will not, that will place this property outside the flood hazard area.
All these maps, this is what's called zone, uh, all these maps are just computer generated based on topography and various other things. Uh, you can have a, basically, this would be a ground truthing exercise to say, in fact, this should not be in the flood hazard.
Similar to a pickled law court that's like real.
A pickled law court, which was, you know, fifteen feet up the side of a piece of rock. So it's effectively.
They're coming out and doing a field, field visit.
Yeah.
And start looking at it from this.
So assuming that they excluded from the flood hazard zone, then.
Then no permit required.
Right.
And if they don't, then there is a permit required.
Yeah.
Right.
And if they want to go ahead, and it's, basically, they may end up having to raise the building to bring it up above the base flood elevation. That would be the way to do it.
Concrete buildings don't raise good.
Not easily.
That would be bringing it in confirmation with the development standards.
But it was just said that that building has not been ever flooded.
But that's not.
But this is, the map says it does.
Tomorrow, there could be a flood.
The map says it is, but if you walk the ground.
And this is all on the one building we're talking about, the one that they've.
Well, both, both existing buildings are within the flood hazard area. So if they wanted to.
And the existing buildings, whether like have any resemblance to a building, not the, the one that had the fire.
No, not, not the original, which I don't know what that.
And they did represent, in which we didn't accurately reflect here, I think. They had talked about they had made improvements to both standing buildings.
I think you can substantial improvements.
Yeah, so, but we're talking about the one they've made the most improvements to, the one that's closest to the water.
Yes. But both of them are. So I will go back to them and say.
Who are the current owners?
Charles and Savannah Baker. They previously rented the McClellan property on one oh three, which was the subject of also an outstanding violation. The garage built, not by them, but by McClellan. And also did the, um, river, the, the setting the rip.
River bank stabilization.
Stabilization on behalf.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good, good. Thank you. Pain in the neck, but thanks.
Right, I think that concludes my report, since Seagordner is on the agenda.
Yeah, that's right, okay. I think the only thing I have is Cavendish's new subdivision is now, I guess, before their select board subdivision rigs. I haven't had a chance, I've asked for a word document to, to send to you guys, to share with you guys. I haven't gotten that yet. I have a PDF which I'll send, but I wanted the word so we could compare versions. I don't know much about what's in it. Yeah, I hope that, uh, let's see. Got an email about, we, I forwarded it to you, Faith, the town clerk got it as well, you're all got it.
Campground thing.
About a marijuana campground in town. Yeah, so.
Where are we putting that?
What's that?
Where are we putting that?
What'd you say?
Where are we putting that?
Oh, I don't, I don't know. It's five acres or something. I didn't say.
Well, wait, why did we get an email about?
They wanna know what, what zoning we need to apply for to get a marijuana campground.
Well, it's someone interested in purchasing land.
To set up a marijuana campground.
With a, with a septic permit already in place.
Yeah, I know. I wonder what that is.
I don't know.
Well, you can't, you smoke marijuana, obviously.
I thought that was every campground.
What's that?
I thought that was every campground.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that's the last I knew.
Intended for adult guests with a focus on nature, wellness and canvas friendly relaxation.
Yeah, there you go. I, I guess I just read between the lines on that one.
Isn't that where I'm talking glamming?
What is, what are we thinking? Where do we think this is? Five acres on a septic permit, five acres?
It's always six acres. Um, the only place I could think of is.
Crowley Fields.
No, Tiffany Road.
Tiffany has one?
Wasn't it? There was a six acre plot with a septic permit.
Oh, it could be.
For sale there, but I thought it sold.
We'll find out soon enough.
The thing about, the thing about it is, right, and I mean, which you'll probably tell them, is nobody can stop you.
Yeah.
It'd be kind of amusing. That's the thing about having no rules.
I guess the general store will have to sell more Cheetos and.
Yeah, I mean.
But they're gonna put it across me.
I mean, probably what you'd see happen is the general store sell.
Sorry?
The general store would sell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, do they have six acres with a septic system on it?
You mean an extra septic system?
It almost sounds like police land where he wants to do that.
I think that's all I had. I don't think we had any of their emails. I'm trying to think about it, no. All right, so, um, I put it under subdivision for two reasons. This site visit with Seagordner, I thought, I thought well. In, in contrast to the Blue Spruce one, it was a general good cheer kind of situation rather than nastiness. And they thought they might want to do a subdivision, but that's not the reason we initially thought of putting it in here. We thought that the easiest way to give them what they want in terms of the new access is just to modify our permit. And just go through the hearing process for that. It would be, now, we haven't done a hearing, a permit amendment, but it would be, I think, a very efficient hearing, you know.
Is this the change that the neighbors are objecting to because it's changing the route of the driveway?
Well, we were sort of, we don't really know what the neighbors will say, but that's, the hearing is their chance, chance to weigh in.
Yeah, I thought the original big one was that they were gonna put a road like out across the property out through here. Now this isn't showing up.
Yeah, because it was an issue of not having the map in color, which we now have. They have, Tyler has submitted an application, but my.
Oh, he has, okay.
Yeah, but, and, and, and provided this color copy, which makes much clearer what is actually being proposed, but it also notes a future presumably proposed subdivision, which he's not referencing in this application.
He's not seeking today?
No. However, I think my main question is, apart from the map, the application and the state's approval, what other documentation do you need, if any, for the application to be considered complete?
Well, if, so is it, do you have any idea why he doesn't wanna do the subdivision now or?
Uh, no, but I could go back to him and ask.
We're not begging for it. We're just, he did say.
Better to ask.
We would rather do one than two.
Yeah, I mean, it would make life easier generally.
It might be better right now if we just deal with this particular one, because the neighbors are gonna come up.
Okay.
I'll, I'll put money on it.
Well, what I would hate to do is do two and we can do one.
Yeah.
Not just that, but if he can't get subdivided, why would he put in another?
They're gonna come up, I'm guaranteed.
Oh, yeah.
Right. But why would he, another thing is, why would they, to some degree, why would they put in another driveway if they can't get it subdivided?
To separate the access to this, this is a house. This is.
Yeah, but I'm saying this is what they're proposing for subdivision stuff if they couldn't get that.
I don't want to speculate as to why they want the subdivision, but if I had to, it would be like to separate his business interests off into like.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
He can own it as an LLC next door. I don't know what they're gonna do.
It wouldn't make sense.
This is a residence, this is a residence.
Separate the business, in case something puts something down and that's getting.
Some sort of contracting?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, when you got your house and your business on the same land, you're kind of stuck with it, you know, but.
And then if somebody sues your business, they can take your house.
And they, they take everything.
Well, you can't sell your business.
If he doesn't want to go through the full subdivision as hinted there, what, what, what documentation do we need? I mean, we have the, um, plots from the previous subdivision, but do we need a new one which marks this?
No, I, I don't think we need a, um, my, my view would be if we do a sub, if they wanna subdivide again, we would need a survey.
Yeah.
But for, we're mostly changing the sort of conditions of approval.
Yeah.
Then we can do that without, I think, I mean, does everybody agree with that?
Can you say that again?
I think because we're not changing law lines, we don't need a new survey. We're just changing the conditions of approval.
Knowing these neighbors, we might as well take away all the restrictions that were put on it at the time and avoid bitching for whatever he does down the road.
What?
We put on the restrictions for the tree line against the, uh, the road. Uh, your bushes have to be.
Yeah, no, I get, but so you would, you would take, you're suggesting to take all of that out?
Yeah, take it all out, because what purpose does it serve? It served to satisfy the neighbors, not for any other purpose.
Well, that's part of it.
That's part of it, and they still wanna satisfy it.
That's it.
Yeah, but the thing is, no matter what, if anybody who owns that property, they're gonna bitch. And why, I mean, all.
I don't, I agree.
The only thing was the guy in the back didn't wanna see a house back there. Doesn't look like there's a house back there.
No, that's not accurate.
That's pretty much.
Well, we'll hear from them. Well, we'll hear from them at the hearing.
Yeah, well, he wasn't even here at that hearing. I think he wrote in at the time. It was the guy back here.
Yeah, named Smith.
Yeah, he's got all that land.
The old, the old, uh, priest firm.
Well, anyway, we have to review. So the issue, the, the current owners have no issue with the restrictions. They just want the access moved and they want the ability to actually put more screening in in another location. They just wanna swap that. I think.
Not a new, an, an additional access.
Additional access, but to add more screening near the old one to kind of separate certain materials, re-separate the two properties in a way, without the subdivision to cut back on the, the paved area, the gravel area.
So I understand that this application, is it really for a subdivision? Is this for an alteration of the conditions of the previously approved subdivision?
We don't really have a separate, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have like. I mean, the decision last time was to get them to put in a subdivision application, so we just need to work out.
I believe it's complete. My, my, my suggestion would be that's enough information.
For what they're trying to do. Now, if they're trying to finish by actually making laws, then they need to.
Right.
So I guess the best thing to do is contact them and make sure that they are not trying to act as, they just want the driveway moved.
Right.
And they want, no, not move, just an additional.
Or additional driveway, that's correct.
And in other words, he wants one to the house and a separate driveway to his commercial property.
Yeah.
I think simplistically that's, I think, what he wants.
Well, he has, he wants a new access to the house.
Can I see the map again?
Sorry.
Yeah, well, the, the last time we had it, we only had it in black and white, which caused quite a lot of confusion. But when we decided that.
So I will sort of, yes, reiterate, they were very, um, open and, um, willing to work with us and I thought it was, it was very appreciated and they, you know.
Yeah, what you want is pretty simple.
So.
You know, and he, he was open and above board from the beginning. When he put in, you know, that I'm doing, what is it, a six bedroom house instead of a four bedroom house, which meant he had, he had a new septic, which he did. I mean, he was, you know. He was very above board.
So are there two houses now on this one lot, plus the contractor's shop?
There was a duplex and a house.
Sorry?
There's a duplex and a house.
I see.
And a contractor shop.
Yeah.
Right.
And which is the one that's farther in?
The house.
That's a house and the duplex is the one that's closer to the shop?
Yeah. And my understanding, when I spoke to him, whenever it was, a couple of years ago, when the paperwork, VCR paperwork was very confused, is this duplex is now, his father, who owns that piece of land, is living in the duplex together with another, another bit of the duplex. So rather than building an additional single family residence here, they turned this into a duplex and Tyler Seagordner lives there this time.
Well, at the time, they had two septic systems on that.
They had three septic systems on two lots.
Right.
So then they went to one septic system on one, one on the other.
Tyler's living here?
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Well, when his wife came home from work, she pulled into this place.
Well, this is the duplex and I.
That's where they're building the new, they wanna build a new driveway here is that she can get in easier and not have to come through the construction.
Yeah.
And that's what I thought I heard him say.
Yeah.
And the anticipated future subdivision would not separate the residents from the shop, would separate the duplex from the shop.
Right. Yeah, because I think he.
He wants to sell that.
The duplex, which is where I believe Walter Seagordner is currently living, is at least one.
Because there's no house on Walter's piece.
No.
Huh. All right. Just allow him to convey the duplex separately.
I thought he said that his father's house was this one, no?
Well, maybe I've got it the wrong way around, but, um.
Yeah, dad had one and he had the other.
Yeah.
Oh, this one says subdivision right here.
Yeah.
Huh, okay. The only one back there too?
That's, yeah, that's his father. And then the one next to that's below it still.
This one is.
Yeah. That's his father.
Yeah.
It would make sense that that one's his because it says on this one, that's his land and the one in the back's his father's. Uh, this, this one.
Oh, there's some different notes on that one? Oh, yeah, these are different notes. Right. And you said something about he, his father built his house closer. Did you see that? Something about his fa- father didn't build where he originally was?
So I think the original thinking had been that his father, who owns this block, would build on.
Build on his land, but instead he built on.
Well, there is a single family residence here and a duplex here.
Right.
We are not exactly, I am not exactly sure who lives in which. I thought his father lived in one of these in the duplex and he lived here, but.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, you might now.
You guys don't seem to think there's, is there a rule about how many houses go on? Like, do we have to subdivide at some point if he's building more or, how many houses can go in one lot? Is there a rule about that?
No.
No, okay.
But they can only declare one as their, um.
Homestead? Okay.
Well, which would get the house site value. Because this year, we changed it from the duplex to the newer house.
Was his homestead that coloration?
Well, cuz the newer house was a, is residence.
Now it is?
Yeah. Really, we don't know who lives in what.
There's no one claiming.
So he's, okay, that's, so that's the basis of why we're thinking that he lives in the newer house.
See, Tyler owns everything.
He owns all of it by.
All the houses.
Well, the deed, yeah.
I'm not that way in the back though.
Right.
So we changed his, well, it got confirmed, but we assumed at the start with that the new house is where he, Tyler himself is going to live.
Yeah, okay.
He's the owner, the heir.
That's.
So if he doesn't, if he doesn't designate any business or rental use, the whole property is going to be taxed as a residence.
Okay. Well, which one's higher? I, I heard it differently from him in person, but I don't know if it really matters. I don't wanna get into.
Yeah, it really doesn't matter cuz the only, only discussion basically we got is the driveway.
Yeah, the only question is, I guess.
Well, it's sort of, I mean. So, so you, uh, I mean, we're sort of building in an assumption here, we're doing something for a resident, right? So it's like new driveway for a resident, but it's different if it's gonna be like a rental, commercial.
Well, but like you, well, but this, obviously, there's family members living in one and him living in the other, which one that is, we don't know, but I guess the question is, is like, if you, I mean, owning a business and wanting to separate off that one from it, like you said, for viability reasons.
It makes sense to, cuz, because if I understand correctly, he's living in the house that will remain on the same lot as the business.
Yeah, but he owns all of them.
No, I'm just kidding.
I don't know what, what's true.
I think we probably need to just ask, cuz I mean, we're just two totally different answers we're getting here.
But let's ask what? Who lives with it?
I mean, I don't see.
Shouldn't that go in this way?
Yeah, I was gonna say, and that driveway, the only question is, we should put a driveway in.
Cuz the, yeah, the only, the only question that has come to us is the driveway.
Yeah, the other question is, is that we're gonna subdivide at some point?
Well, I'm going to ask him because there is a specific.
Yeah, we need to ask whether.
Think here, which suggests that there is going to be a subdivision.
It literally says it on there.
In the future.
Yeah, approximate subdivision boundary.
And, and if the reason, the reason for the driveway is relevant.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, if the, if the reason for the driveway is for his own private residence or if it's for a, a commercial duplex to be rented, it's potentially different.
I mean, it could just be that he wants to be able to sell it and then he wants that property to have its own driveway.
Right. And then it's sort of built into like the subdivision.
Right.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, is he just putting in driveway or is he subdividing as well?
Yeah, I mean, we're kind of back to that too, yeah.
Which I will ask.
Yeah, we'll ask. Okay, let's ask to confirm the purpose of the driveway and the intent of the subdivision. All right, let's. All right, I think we're good on that then. All right, where are we now? Well, I touched on this. Well, we don't think we have new business, so we'll go into subdivision revision. I'll send around the Cavendish one when I have it. I think that's where we are on that. Blue Spruce, we spent a lot of time on. I think we're all set there. Um, do we have anything else? Please say no.
I have nothing else.
There was one question came up earlier, I haven't heard an answer on it.
All right, what?
Mr. Mike.
Sorry?
Up the hill here.
Oh, Astor, Astor. Yeah, I will write to him again.
Oh, that's Astor, there's a gazebo. Is that it?
No, that's not the gazebo.
The addition on the garage.
The garage.
Yeah.
Oh, there's something else.
I'll rephrase that. The remodeling of the garage and the addition.
Oh, I haven't.
Which is already into several thousand dollars.
You do have a pretty bad, almost.
Pardon?
Are you doing it?
Nope. I got enough trouble.
Yeah, besides, I haven't fully occupied.
You still working on yours?
Oh, Jesus, I'll be there another year.
Forever and ever?
What on earth?
When you keep changing your mind, I have a set of original.
You guys are like.
And those left town a long time ago.
You guys are like V-Trans.
Right. You're moving in with me, are you kidding? But that is.
Well, hey, hey, don't ask, don't tell.
There's, there's two shovels up leaning up against the side of the house. They stand out in front of the house, lean on them all day, look at it.
All right, so.
Talk, no, we don't lean on, we talk.
I think that's it.
They're playing me. The only other thing is the, a minute that we table.
We're gonna come back to it.
Next month.
We'll put some more words in. We'll look at it next month. We'll meet on Wednesday, next week, Wednesday. You what?
I wasn't here for it, but it doesn't matter to me.
At least, yeah, but, uh, he'll be around next week, yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll try to get those, I, I'll try to write up, take copy and paste the template we usually use for that and take this stuff in there.
All right, what time is it?
Wednesday.
Now, when Cheetos are done with school, so it'll be interesting to see how much I get done. What?
What time you had said before? I just wanna put on my calendar.
I said five thirty.
Five thirty?
That's okay.
And then next regular meeting.
Will be on the Tuesday, maybe.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
July fifteenth? Sixteenth?
Six thirty, can we say?
Six thirty?
Six thirty.
The third Tuesday of July is the fifteenth, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's June, that's the fifteenth. I'm like, I don't want something. Coming on.
Summer's going fast.
What summer?
What summer?
Right.
Twenty, twenty-six weekends of rain? Come on.
What summer?
Thirteen.
Twenty-six.
Since March thirteenth. Or who's counting? We don't count snow. No. Precipitation.
Cool.
For the, uh, Garrow application and these, I'll, I mean, I'll be in before next week anyway, but I will leave them somewhere probably.
Great. Yeah, cuz I'll have to write all. All the things down, um.
Oh, and by the way, it is true that I.
One more thing.
I didn't copy Bob on the email announcing the hearing.
Oh, is that what he was referring to?
But I did post on his P O box stand, the notice of the public hearing.
Plus, we told him at the.
We told him it was gonna be.
Yeah, we scheduled that with him.
Yeah, but I was a part of it. I wasn't gonna fight that with him.
Unless.
No, I didn't really, I didn't, frankly, I didn't find it very credible.
He's perpetually agree.
Driven past the notice every day as he drove into his driveway.
I think we're, we're all, I think we can safely say.
No, his mailbox, obviously.
I think we can safely say that all parties will be pleased when this is done.
Weekend home.
I mean, no, nobody's ever happy. I do.
To be happy, it's over.
Oh, yeah, I see.
So, all right, all right. Seven thirty-five, meeting is adjourned, thank you.